Everybody, I have six o'clock. So let's, I mean, six thirty. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the invocation and the pledge. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of the community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that might affect our residents and neighbors. We ask a special prayer for Kelly and Bill. Bill Pol, who is still in ICU after heart surgery. And bless every first responder and military member who protect us at home and abroad. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to item three on our agenda, public comments. Ms. Erica?
We have quite a few. Most of them want to speak during the agenda items.
Okay.
And, but first is Christie Smith.
I'm Christie Smith, 366 30 Canyon, and I'm going to set a trend here, but I'm going to ask not to be recorded by McJunkin's camera or his phone right here. So if you could please turn that off before I speak.
It's the public meeting, I will not do that.
Okay. So just so you guys know, when he shoots videos, many times it's edited. So I'm going to make sure that I'm not edited. So, anyway, I'm speaking to the council. A few concerns I have that I brought up in the past. First of all, welcome the new council members. Some big concerns I have in this city of Simonton where we do have ordinances is we do not have a code enforcement officer. So there are so many violations that we have. Dog kennels being run, junk vehicles being stored on multiple people's property that don't work, lighting at the wrong levels, people still living in RVs, fencing not getting approvals with the neighbors, and still environmental issues. So last year, we had two council members that were working on getting the city to permit fencing, which would actually help with the utility easement as well as the aerial easement, to make sure that both neighbors agree what type of fencing is to be used. And the city does have the fencing, so it would be very beneficial if we do move forward on permitting fencing in the city of Simonton. And most of us came to live out here because we love the open fencing community, which is a big attraction to Simonton anyway. And the other big issue, and I give this to Erica, but I don't know what we can do except for a follow-up, but they still are doing a turn-only lane at the stop sign in Simonton by the salon. So today, we almost had two more wrecks. So they stop, these people take a right turn like they're going to Weston, and they're blocked by a concrete truck, and then here comes a car, and it's going to be a disaster. So I don't know what to do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ron's story.
I'm going to wait till you get on.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'm going to hear what everybody's got. It depends on the vote.
And I believe everybody else is joining the agenda items.
Great. Moving on to item four, consider and take action on the consent agenda. Council, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
At this point, I have a question in regards to that because the wording of the motions made at the previous meeting on five C and five D is not what was presented on the agenda for tonight.
So who is that on item five? Right now, we're only on item four, which of those A, B, and C consent agenda items?
Right, but it just, it also says to vote for the minutes, and those minutes don't read the way that this, that's why I was asking a question.
Okay. So you want to pull item A and discuss it separately where the minutes are?
It basically says that, so the exception of the rule is that when a council member requests that one or more items is removed from that consent agenda.
Right. So I'm asking, would you like to remove item A because that's the one that has the council meeting right here?
Look.
I'm looking at the agenda for tonight.
I understand.
If you want to pull this agenda item because that was approving the minutes, we can take that off, and you can approve B and C, and we'll talk about A separately. You're saying that the minutes are not correct.
That's fine.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. No, I'll second.
Okay. I'm going to stop you because I think you're asking for something different than second.
The minutes are here.
Right, so just then?
Those are correct. That's not what I'm questioning. I'm questioning what the new agenda says.
So which, the new, so the current agenda right in front of you? So then, do you have a problem with the agenda that's from last, but the minutes from the last meeting?
No, the minutes are accurate.
Okay.
This agenda is.
Then I think that if you want to second the executive session, I mean, the.
The minutes, yes.
Consent agenda, then you're fine. If you want to make any amendments to that, then just, you can second the motion. But if you want to pull the minutes, then we need to modify the motion.
No, the minutes are accurate. I'm good.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda items? All right, here. Great. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, item five, new business. And we will go through them either way. So item A, consider and take action to accept the rate adjustment from Texas Pride Disposal Services for residential and commercial customers. Do we have a motion?
Is this still our only option?
Yes.
Yes.
So, okay, let's have some discussion before the motion since we're all getting used to how this is working with each other. Texas Pride has brought us a rate adjustment. They haven't taken an increase in, I want to say, five years. Don't vote. I might be misquoting. It's in your packet. They initially asked for 14%. Jennifer wasted no time telling them that was not going to be acceptable. They have come back with a proposal that's in your packet. There's a commercial rate and residential rate. Let me flip my pages so I can catch up with you. This is not changing services. This is just accepting that it's time for them to ask for a rate increase.
There is a provision in the contract that they can, on an annual basis, increase rates based on fuel and productivity measures. They can increase those rates. Texas Pride, over the past three years, has opted not to raise our rates. They emailed me, I've been going back and forth with them on some other issues that we've been having. They emailed me saying, "We are going to, effective July 1st, increase your rates 14%." I responded and said, "That's unacceptable. We are taking this to council because, one, you are still deficient in several measures of the contract that you owe to us, so we're not going to, we're not going to have those deficiencies," and then a 14% increase. So they have come back and they have lowered that 14% increase back down to, I think it's 5.2%. So the last time that there was any rate increase was April of 2020, when council approved to sign a five-year contract. So we are in a five-year contract with Texas Pride until 2025.
So this residential rate would change from 2241 to 2358.
And the contract is obviously not being followed if they're not paying us our franchise fees, correct?
That is correct, but that's what I'm working on. I have to contact them every quarter to get our franchise fee payment, and I also have that on them because we are taking a 2% deficit of a franchise fee that they owe us in arrears since 2019. We're also deficit in an annual $3,500 payment that they owe us that I negotiated with them to be a direct deposit to keep Simonton beautiful. So I have to do an enormous amount of love work with Texas Pride to get them to pay us our franchise.
Understanding that, does it not make sense to go somewhere else?
We brought it to council, and there was, there was a lot of discussion, I think you spoke on it, that you didn't want to change providers.
Oh, no, I didn't even say that. Those words did not come out of my mouth. I don't use them.
It's all, it's up for, I mean, always up for negotiation, the context of the contract, and I have made that very clear with Texas Pride on several occasions, that we have a 35-day clause that we can cancel with them, and I have exercised my right and my position to say, "We will revisit that, and I will have council revisit that." We have actually collected bids from other haulers in the area. Texas Pride still remains the cheapest, but there are struggles. Like I said, there is an immense amount of work on my part to make sure that we are paid properly, and we are still three years in arrears of the 2% franchise deficit. I should not, it's not, I should not have to contact them every month, two months, three months. It wasn't in January. They were a year and a half behind on franchise fees. In addition to when we were paid those franchise fees, we are still 2%. They were paying us on an old franchise fee of 5% that I had renegotiated to 7% in 2020. They are still operating off of an old, you know, no longer valid contract at 5%.
So the decision right now is, do we accept their price increase for July 1st? Or a timeframe now? And you can take any other way of action.
Just a question, what happens if we don't?
They have a 30-day, or 31-day same clause that we do, so they might pick up the rest of the next 30 days, but they, if they decided to cancel.
So it's 30 days in any time?
Yeah, each, either party can give a 30-day.
So we could accept this and then give other bids for the next meeting?
Correct. And we have already sent them, I sent them a letter of deficiency, like scheduling out what the deficiencies in the contract were. They had not met the annual donation requirement to keep Simonton beautiful of $3,500. You are paying on an old franchise fee. You are late on your franchise payments. And I, when I get a spreadsheet, I have to, it's gotten to the point that I have to ask them for a spreadsheet, and I have to manually calculate the franchise fees because the last time they sent them, they were $1,200 off. Like, I shouldn't have to be calculating our own franchise fees to make sure that we're paid appropriately.
The answer is clear. We need to move on from this company. As many people as complain.
When we look at this in February or March, the options were more expensive for less service, so council did not make a move at that time. But like we said, we can make that change anytime. Council wants to work on that.
That is correct. You can choose to accept the 5.2% increase, and then from this council meeting to the next council meeting, you can open up bids again for trash haulers, and then that can come back on the agenda in July, and we can choose a new trash provider based on those bids that were turned in. Because we do know for sure that there are two providers, other providers in this area in addition to Texas Pride. There were two providers that we reached out to in February that declined our area, and then another one was significantly higher. What we were paying in a quarter is what we would be paying for. So our location is a battle because we are not close to any of the land.
Well, and it's our population.
And our population.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the motion that we accept this.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Accept this new charge.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
No, sorry. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, item B, approve the certification of preliminary taxural values for the city of Simonton from Fort Bend County. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm looking at B in the wrong section. You're correct. Item B is consider and take action to approve the mayor's recommendation of appointing Justin Boudreau to the position of mayor pro temp. I have a couple of things I want to share. One is, we included Justin's resume again in your supporting documents. I think some of y'all were able to go to county event. I hope that you got to know each other. I know that some of the objections some folks voiced was that we didn't know Justin, so I hope we've provided more information about that since we met. Mayor pro temp definition, just, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, in the event that the mayor of a general law city is absent or incapacitated, the mayor pro temp does not actually become mayor, rather, the mayor pro temp assumes the duties of the mayor, including presiding meetings of the governing body. That's from Texas Local Government Code. Just trying to provide as much support as we can. Do we have any, we'll try not to rush it since everybody's getting used to it. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to nominate someone else.
Okay.
Courtney Cox.
Do we need to, procedurally, do we need to take action on the recommendation first? Just to make sure I don't do it wrong.
Yeah, so just because the name is on the agenda, it's any nomination.
Great.
I do have some people that they wanted to speak on all agenda items, so.
Okay. Okay, let's open that to comments for folks that were signed up for this agenda item.
There's a couple of comments that doesn't need to come before the action.
Okay. So if anybody wanted to speak on this item particularly and you signed up, now is your opportunity.
I was going to speak on comprehensive plan, but Andy Perry, 219 Pony Lane, and you can record me out if I care, just don't edit me out. Justin's the most qualified. He's been on the board. He's done the emergency management, helped out with the flood. You know, I'm trying to bite my tongue here, but he's the most qualified right now. If next year you guys want to put another pro temp, I don't even know Justin, but I know, I've heard about him, I've heard what he's done, I've seen what he's done, I've helped out in the floods, I see what he's done up here in City Hall. So to step in in case Lori's gone, I think he's the best man for the job. You guys got your agenda? Do with what you will.
Courtney Turner, 1008 Pony Lane. Speaking from the last meeting, there was, there was a kind of unanimous with the new council against Justin being appointed mayor pro temp. And I didn't understand it, and there was also no discussion about it. So we talked about transparency quite a bit here. So if we make a decision here, I'd love to hear why the person you appoint is the most qualified. And I'd love to hear why you would not want to hear, or not want to have Justin as the mayor pro temp, why you think he's not as qualified as whoever you want to appoint. Same thing with the comprehensive plan, that's the future of our city.
Do you mind if we speak during that for that one?
But, you know, we've discussed transparency for the last year. I'd love to see it here, too. So just, please give your reasons, and I think we'd all love to hear that.
Stacy Gotti, 1026 Pony Lane. I need to reiterate what my fellow constituents have said. Justin Boudreau is the most qualified out of anybody sitting up here besides the mayor herself, who is qualified to be mayor. You want to nominate Courtney? Why is she better qualified, being brand-new, than Justin Boudreau, who has been involved with the city for years? Not on council, but with everything else. And have any of you, all of you that are new, done any of your in-services with staff here at City Hall? Have you done any of your training? Are you objecting to the consent agenda? That tells me right there that you lack the education and foundational know-how to even sit in these chairs that you were elected for to serve our constituents. Shame on you, all of you. I'd like to speak.
Yeah. I was here during the floods. Many of the new people weren't, and my husband pumped water out of Valley Lodge with Justin and many other volunteers that have been easily exterminated from this community by the new people that are uneducated and didn't flow. So when your house takes on water, three feet twice, who are you going to call? Justin Boudreau. I haven't seen any of y'all three do anything community service for this city. And she couldn't even agree to the agenda, make a motion to approve the agenda for last night, and she's going to leave the meeting if Boudreau's not here? Y'all need to think hard about who you're servicing. Are you servicing McJunkin, or are you servicing the community?
Angela King, 1026 Pony Lane. My biggest thing that I want to say is that Courtney, I believe you, and I can't say for sure because I don't remember. You guys said that you were running and your platform was force of people. You hear what your people are saying. You need to do what you told your community you were going to do. I don't know you guys very well, I don't know Justin, but I know his resume, and that is what I'm going on. You guys are new. You have things to learn. That's okay. But you use that as your platform to get elected. You are going to lower taxes, and you're going to listen to the people because you stood up here and you fought for the city, and they didn't listen to you. And here we are. We just voted.
Susan Eldar, 6730. Susan, before you start, specifically, but just making sure that we keep our comments on this item, and we can do it again for every item that, if folks are signed up for that.
So my question would be the same about the training and you guys being brand-new. I'm sure you guys are going to do a great job, but right now, you're learning, and I think jumping into a mayor pro temp position without having any background in any city council or anything else that has to do with the city, without doing your training, without spending time with the city to find out how it's all running and any of that other stuff, I think you need to really consider who is actually most qualified for the position,
Is that everyone? Okay. So we, Burns, sorry, that was my fault. We should have had the comments first. We have Justin, recommendation for Justin to be appointed on the agenda. Burns has made a motion to elect Courtney. Still good with that? Okay. Do we have any other nominations? All right, Courtney, are you accepting that nomination?
I'll accept that nomination.
The mayor is going to be just like any other vote, so it's a motion, a second, and then a vote.
Okay.
And just by the way, I think, I said, you can vote for yourself.
We have two candidates open in this motion. What are we going to do?
I heard one for.
We don't have the second, yeah.
You have a motion for Courtney Cox, and then there's going to be a second.
There's no action on Justin.
Not, not.
Because he's recommended, but not.
Not this time. The motion goes for Courtney Cox.
Okay. Do we have a second? A second? Any further discussion? Yes. Okay.
I know that there were some people here that were accusing us, and yes, we are new. But we're taking it seriously. We've, I think, we've taken, all three of us have taken at least the Open Meetings Act. We were given a stack of papers about this big. I was told, "You don't have to read those, you can just have Jennifer tell you what's in them." But I did read them, and I end there, when I was reading about the mayor pro temp, it actually says by state law, the mayor pro temp represents the majority of council. So that would be the reason that one of us needs to be, it's state law. I read it.
But you're sure that because of the people.
We are educating ourselves. And we're, there are some people that we're going to, you know, we have to vote our conscience, and that's what I think I promise to do.
No, you have to vote for the betterment of the city, not your conscience or how you feel about something.
If somebody's for it, somebody else is against, which is, if it comes down to, I have to read this.
You have a whole room. You are elected to do what's best for the city, not what you feel is best for the council.
Did you hear me say that I read that stack of papers that we were given?
Does it make you more educated on how this all works?
It doesn't. I'm educated, it's, I wish I had it here, but it.
We've all read it, we know.
Justin said, he can probably tell you, mayor pro temp, it says it's.
So why is Courtney more qualified than Justin? That's what he was asking.
She might not be.
But you're going to vote for her. But you're going to put her in there anyway, and that's better for the city than putting Justin Boudreau in? Y'all have lost your minds.
I don't understand how Stacy can sit there and just badger us.
Pretty sure you're. Because I was on the receiving end of it two months ago.
I never said anything ugly about you, Stacy, ever.
I wasn't saying anything.
Question for Justin about.
I just, I don't know.
Courtney feel like she's qualified to this?
Justin said, he said, how he, that's mayor pro temp, he said that it, a mayor pro temp represents the majority. Well, he just said.
No, I was asking, I don't know where that statement was about what I'm saying that kind of, but it could be something that the materials are given, but the state law for it is that.
Please speak up.
I'm sorry, it says, so this is the state law about the mayor pro temp. It says, "The mayor shall preside at all meetings of the governing body and except elections they vote holding there's a tie." After that, it says each new, at each new governing body's first meeting, or as soon as practical, the governing body shall elect one alderman to serve as president pro temp, the mayor pro temp for a term of one year. This is, these are the duties of the mayor pro temp, it just says, "If the mayor fails, is unable, or refuses to act, the mayor, the president pro temp, mayor pro temp shall perform the mayor's duties and is entitled to receive the fees and compensation prescribed for the mayor." That's all the duties of the mayor, just to run, essentially run the meeting or to fill in if, if the mayor were to be sick for an extended period of time, the mayor can sign, is authorized to sign checks on behalf of the mayor. So I know the wording about representing the people, I don't know about that, but we're here, that's the.
Pro temp. Two of us should check that mayor pro temp.
There's not a second mayor pro temp.
If something happens to the first.
Then the order, so the order is the mayor, and then as far as administering the meetings, if it were to be that whoever the mayor pro temp is, if the mayor and the mayor pro temp were to be absent, then generally, it's just, it's the choice of the council. A lot of cities do that by seniority, some do it by other, you know, other factors, but there's no prescription for who is supposed to run the meeting after the mayor pro temp and the mayor if they're both absent. But for functions of the mayor pro temp, it's only to fill in for the mayor in the, if the mayor's unable to, is too sick, or absent, you know, for a meeting or for day-to-day functions of the city.
Thank you, Justin.
Or you think you're sick.
Okay.
You can have your suit.
Okay, thank you. For everybody.
But there was a question asked, though, that wasn't answered. Does Courtney feel that she's qualified?
Qualified. Okay, I don't know if I can defend myself or not, but this is completely against the policy that you passed and the rest of.
But this is what y'all used to do to them.
Okay. It's not a test, however.
I am educated. I have educated myself, and unbeknownst to those unpopular belief in the crowd, I educated myself before I was sworn in. I actually have been in the course of taking the emergency management classes as well, which is not a requirement, but I'm doing it anyway. There are several on staff and several that were on the city council that don't have anything. Stacy Gotti, you might be the only one that has those. I don't know, I'm sure Justin has those because he's been doing it as well.
Did you say on staff? So you're incorrect.
You're the only one that has it.
Everybody on staff has it.
It's not listed on the, on anything on the site.
I have all of them.
Okay, so let's get into everybody else.
They asked if I was qualified, so I am. I can assure you, I'm trying my hardest to learn this, where it is an unbiased situation. There's a lot of people that, everybody, for whatever reason, it's been told that I'm some sort of puppet and I don't have a brain, but I assure you, I have a brain, I have my own two legs to stand on. I don't need anybody to tell me what to say. I'm going to work my darndest to educate myself because that's what the residents that aren't on Facebook and aren't throwing daggers and whatever else are asking me to do. So all of the constituents, besides the ones just in this room, trust me, I'm listening, I hear you, and I promised that I would educate myself to work with the city staff to do so, and that's what I'm doing. That's all I'm doing. I had no idea that Burns was going to nominate me, by the way. None.
Do you work with city staff?
I'm sorry?
Have you worked with city staff at all? Have you come up here?
I had a meeting with Lori, and since then, I have not had an opportunity to come talk to them. I've asked them for some paperwork. I think Jennifer was out sick for a few days.
You haven't asked me for anything. I haven't had a request from you.
Right, I did.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's what I just said, and I think Jennifer was out for a few days with either a sick baby or a sick herself or something, and I just haven't had a chance to yet. The answer is not yet.
Okay, has everybody who signed up to speak during this item had an opportunity? Great. Council, any further discussion? Great. Council, any further discussion? Kind of passed that, but more opportunity? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, abstaining? Thank you. Item C, consider and take action to approve bids for repair to leaks on the roof of City Hall. Since we have folks that have signed up for all items, is there anybody who cares to speak on the roof issue? Okay, great. So for some years, the roof has been leaking here at City Hall. We've been able to, well, some trial and error, we've had some leaks fixed, some that took years to identify the problem and you can get those fixed. But we're at a moment where, you can see the evidence in every room in the ceiling, the drips, or some from air conditioning and some from the roof. But right now we have a leak that is shedding water into the back hall and the offices over here. So what you have in your packet are three bids to repair the identical pieces. KV for $8,443.50. Renovation Unlimited for $7,450. Ameristar for $6,500. There is a second bid from Ameristar for $5,655. They removed replacing the extra panels. All three of their first bids include that same information. They were giving us an option for how to do a less expensive repair if we wanted to. You have lots of photos of the damage. We can certainly talk more about that if you have questions. But I also have received and want you to know about before we make a decision, that there's a bid that's also from Ameristar. That's the company we have used before and has been the best, most reasonably priced and the best at diagnosing. They pointed out that best practices when this roof was put on are not the same practices that are considered best practices today. So the panels were installed adjoining instead of overlapping, and that's what's causing us over time to have more leakage. So the initial estimate to replace is $17,810. But if you were to, just consider, if you were to approve repairs right now for six, seven, or eight thousand dollars, do we want to invest that much or should we consider a replacement on the roof? So those are the five pieces of information that we have available for you.
Do you have a square footage?
Let me see. I got that.
I don't have it on here. I'd have to, I'd have to... I'm sure that Ameristar has it, but I'd have to ask for that.
Ameristar gave us... Ameristar has done work for us in the past. We have used three previous contractors. Ameristar is the only one that has been able to actually fix our problems and honestly diagnose what was wrong. Ameristar also comes recommended to us by, from several other surrounding cities. They're very familiar with government work. They're pre-bid through the state on Byboard. And they understand the governmental realm extremely well. Like I said, they have been able to fix some of our problems that previous roof companies were not able to diagnose and fix. They're our preferred vendor just because we have a working relationship with them and they come in extremely reasonable. They have extremely fair turnaround time. They come in and they get out. They're usually done in less than a day.
Other question. How was this? I can't remember.
This roof is supposed to be 30-year-old.
Okay. And I heard you say it's not overlapped.
Correct. It's butt to butt.
I didn't know they ever did it that way. It's a wall.
Well, and that's the problem is it's, the panels are butt to butt. And when they're butt to butt, they put the screw between butt to butt. So what we had happen is, you know, two weeks ago when we had all this rain, my entire office flooded. So I sat for three days with a fan in my office. In this hallway right here, you can walk into this hallway and you can see where the plastic between the roof and it's sagging and it just holds water. And I was here to myself early one morning on a conference call and it was like somebody turned on the shower and it's spewed down this hallway. They came out that day.
It doesn't sound like it was done. It's probably first of all.
Did mine about live its life because of the way it was...
What I'm saying is, somebody mentioned 17...
Well, in all fairness, in talking with Ameristar, the ideal repair, the 6,500, but to be the most efficient and responsible in that is, do we want to do a $6,500 repair? Or they went ahead and they said, this is what it would cost to do, to completely re-roof it and to do it the correct way, which is the overlapping with the screws on the overlapping and do it correct. That's for council to decide, what you think is the most responsible. So I wanted to be fair and present that price with you and that's, that's kind of, it's considered kind of a state, when you use buying co-ops, these companies are to improve the state through buying co-ops, that that's the best possible rate. It's almost kind of like a, how would you describe it? Like, almost like a wholesale price. They're pre-bid through the state.
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking. If it were up to me, that's the way I would go with a duty.
So council, you have a...
Will not repair this old roof for $6,500.
And you can see the pictures. I mean, they're not, they're not pretty at all.
I just think we're repairing something that's gonna have another problem.
You've got less than you, you know, these rich caps.
Justin just happened to stop by City Hall one day when I had three fans. Everything was moved to the center of my office and there was water pouring in. So he got out with a flashlight, got on the edge of the roof and, yeah.
I would like to say something here. It's, my husband and I just replaced an entire metal roof on a 2,000 square foot building for under $5,000. So I'm just, that's why I was wondering, what is the square footage of the building? And it's, if, I agree, I like the idea of replacing instead of just repairing something that needs to be replaced. But I do think that we need to get bids from the other person, people, because all we've got is their repair. So I think that we need, I think we need to get replacement bids from the other ones.
I can do the same thing with Ameristar that I'm doing with Texas Pride. I can contact these other two vendors and I can, basically when I contact the vendors, I give them an outline of what I'm looking for and have them provide the price. They'll come out, they walk the roof. I can give three quarters on the bids for replacement. And then that can be on the July agenda.
Will we not utilize our website to ask for bids?
When we go out to bid, it's for...
When you...
Well, technically, let me clarify. Going out to bid is something that's over $50,000. This is not an over $50,000 project. So all this requires is 30 bids to bring to council to compare pricing.
Right.
So we only utilize the website to, I mean, we can post something on there, but how does somebody know to go to our website to look for it?
Well, there's a lot of businesses, the reason I'm asking, there's a lot of people that may be in that business that live within our community that do check those things. So I'm just kind of curious if we ever did it on the website or availability. Plus, Ameristar seems to have given you the same bid, one for 5,600, 5,500? It's literally like the same scope of work. Oh, okay. And then this was the only bid that we got for the full roof, right?
The full roof was just like a...
So council can take no action, let this item be on the next agenda?
Mayor, you have some public that would like to comment.
So I would like to ask a quick question. I understand going out for more bids, but my question is, if we have like, which we may or may not, if we have serious rain in between now and the next meeting, this roof can be in big trouble as well as the inside of the building. So if you do go out for more bids, is it possible to pull a special session to approve the new bid coming in? Because I would hate to have Jennifer's office so... I assume she showers every day, so I don't think it's necessary to have her do it here at work as well.
Pray for me.
There's some other organizations out there. And I don't know if it's allowed here. Can we allow them to go get the other bids and then go with the lowest bid to put the new roof on?
So a couple things. So council, can I ask you the question that was just asked and then what you're asking too? So in that situation, that's an emergency situation and there's, if there was ever any bidding requirement to post any, you don't have to do that in an emergency situation. So if, if it came out that something catastrophic were to happen and even more than $50,000 worth of flooding happened or damage, you can get that replaced without having to go out for bids. And so what you could do is, again, and plus what Jennifer just said, is that the quotes coming back even for the full roof replacement can come below 20 grand. Then there's, there's nothing triggered on that for bidding. So it's gonna be whatever you feel like you want to do. And so really, if you could, I mean, wait until next month and then again, something bad were to happen, you got, you got time to call something immediate to fix it. Or you could call for repairs now and then replace it later. All that's open because it's less than $50,000.
And I have a question. Does insurance cover this since you had your autism related to that? The other thing is, can we let people in our community know that it's open for bidding if they, a local person comes to? Put out an announcement and say we need a new roof. Anybody in the Simonton?
There's gotta be a conflict with that.
There's not a conflict. So there's no conflict, under the $50,000 limit, there's no conflict for that. The issue would be if this, you're not required to do bidding, and so I think it's a little technical here, but if a local provider that interacted with the city to create a bid document and then that person or that entity then applied for their own bid, that's where the problem would come. It's not a problem if the city issues its own scope of work for something under $50,000. Anybody can apply for that. Even if it was a project that was over 50, as long as the scope of work wasn't interfered with by a potential bidder, then anybody can respond to that. So if you ever get a project that's $100,000, $200,000, anybody can, can respond to that.
And I think, I think Burns, you brought it up about, when we're evaluating these bids, yes, price, price is important, but quality of work and reputation is also, you know, is also comes into effect. So sometimes we have had contractors at a bid and they have the lowest bid, but when we do reference checks, they don't check out. And so, you know, that's one of the things that we take into consideration as well, you know, and a lot of times when we have projects like this, we'll call Holsher, we'll call, you know, Rosenberg, who do you use for this? Who do you use for that? So we all kind of share a lot of these same contractors for big items like this. And that's, that is very helpful to cities to be able to know what contractor is gonna do the appropriate, you know, for our repairs.
Well, the reason why I'm saying what I'm saying is, you like Ameristar, okay? I'm not familiar with them. So, and they're the lowest, okay? So not, not necessarily that they would be the lowest on the whole roof, but probably very possibly they are. So I'm kind of do, if this is my roof on my house, I want it fixed, like somebody said, before it rains again. So, I mean, I think it is overdue.
That is her case.
To get it done. However, one can do it.
No, and I appreciate that. That's very fair. And I think Lori can attest to this too. There's a lot of things with the building that over, over, you know, previous years we kind of band-aided and we've gotten to the point of where we've band-aided enough to where it's costing us more to remediate than, and that's why I did not ask her for the price of the, of the full roof. They actually emailed me today and they said, hey, you've got a council meeting tonight. I've been thinking about this. And we have that correspondent. Did it print out on here?
Yeah.
Okay, it printed out and she said, I just want to kind of throw this out there. If you're looking at 6,500 full price to completely brand new and do industry standard, it just takes four seconds. So, and I will, I will do our due diligence tomorrow and I will contact the other two and I will get them to give pricing and then you can, somebody else will provide.
So Burns, is your intention that, I'm just asking, is your intention to approve a dollar, up to a maximum dollar amount? Go ahead and get it started so we don't have to wait or...
Yes. That's what I'd like to do. I mean, I just, I don't think you sit here after your office is flooded and you wait for the next...
Can I ask you a question? Is replacing the insulation part of the bid? Because the type of roof up here, the insulation is laid over top if the sheets go down, you may have a lot of water damage and mold and build you up in that insulation. If you're gonna go out and get bids, you better look at and replace insulation a bit too.
And another thing is the gauge of the tin you're putting on, is it the same gauge as on it or can they go to a heavier gauge and that will eliminate the stress later on? Because you're going, you're talking about a future problem if you go back to week 10 versus the heavier gauge material. And there's also an upkeep with those screws that they're putting in. They have to be tightened every so many years.
It's actually every five years.
Every five years, they gotta go back and torque them. Or you're gonna have the same problem.
We did learn that, that the screws have to be tightened and resealed every five years.
Okay, so if the, if the bid that we have, obviously we've got more work to do about it before we pull the trigger, but we want to authorize an amount up to X. And if it's more than this, we need to ring back to council, what's the number? So this bid that we have is 17,810. Is your number, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Burns, but, I mean, do you want to say 20? And if it's more than that, we have to come back? If it's...
And I would, I will, just so you know, I will communicate with you when I get these numbers back. And I can send that out via email. Do not reply "aw," but you can reply back to me as long, and I can give you these amounts with these company names and we can say bye next Wednesday or next Thursday or whatever. And as long as it's under that amount, I can send it out to you. You can reply back to me, you know, that stuff.
Yeah, I also think the gentleman in the back had a good point because where my business is that, when we had a leak, that insulation started, insulation is basically held up with plastic.
Yeah, I wrote that down. I'm gonna ask that.
You would do that? Within the last, I guess, year, year and a half, we replaced the metal roof on our gym over at church. And yes, you have to replace the, you replace the insulation. That's just kind of a, that's a no-brainer, but you might...
Right. No, I wrote that down. I was gonna...
Bruce is exactly right.
That's what's taking it in the office, is that insulation?
Right.
So I agree. I feel we need to make the motion in order to approve an amount that we need to, because this is not what we're talking about. This says approve these bids and these aren't the bids we're gonna approve, right?
Well, we asked Justin before the meeting because since we got this, you know, today, we asked him and he said if we can take, you can take action. What you would do is you would amend to the motion to include, replace the roof up to whatever your documents are.
What's your square footage?
I don't, I, we have it somewhere. I don't know offhand. And I don't want to...
That's where you, that's where you probably should have given.
This was not dated?
Okay, so do we have amended motion?
I'm not changing the motion. See, verse says, consider and take action to approve bids for repair. I'd like to strike the bids for repair, replacement, and then add at the end to approve repair up to the 17,810.
Thank you. Justin, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you. This much closer to dry carpet. Okay, item D, discuss and review the Ardua contract that was approved through the adoption of resolution 2023-07 for services associated with the development of comprehensive plan for the city of Simonton. Y'all asked for this item to be back on the agenda. We, three of us, four of us have met individually when we were doing goal planning and I know that you said you needed to learn more about it. You had questions about... You had questions about why we need it, the size of our city versus the plan. And so I know that some of you came to the kickoff meeting, but not everybody, and I haven't talked to Justin about this obviously at all. So I made sure everybody, I think, has a copy of the PowerPoint that was used during the kickoff meeting. And I thought we would use that as a guide. But mainly, what questions do you have? Do you want to walk through the packets? Or do you have anything specific that you'd like to discuss?
My specific reasoning for questioning that to begin with is what was on the agenda previously was to consider and take action to approve the resolution that you just mentioned, the number 2007, to create the comprehensive plan, advisory committee, blah, blah, and to the group, or to the Ardura group. But the problem at hand is that the contract was signed by Jennifer. It says your name.
And so before I signed it, it was revised to my name and not the city administrator. So I signed it.
Okay, so the final copy that I had asked for wasn't a final copy then? It was the, no, it was when I was here.
The stuff that Mr. McJunkin posted on the website had Lori's signature very clearly on that contract.
Again, this is an oversight, but that was my main concern on that one, as well as there was several statements in this workshop that we attended that the strategic plan had to be, which I found out is not, that's not the case, but that the strategic plan had to be completed before this plan.
It's ideal.
But it's not complete.
It is complete, with the exception of, I think, four spots where it says to be determined, which are the vision and the mission statement, and the 20 people who served on that committee, which was council, ECA, ECB, all agreed and was approved by council that we were going to wait until we got to the comprehensive plan to construct the vision and the mission statement. Those were the things that were to be determined.
To make sure. Well, the whole guiding principles was blank.
Guiding principles is your mission.
Okay, so there were six pages in there that were blank of the 29, to be.
I don't think there were six pages, I think there were sections within those pages that were blank. But also, let me clarify, in the CPAC meeting, I did not say that the strategic plan was mandatory or required for the comprehensive plan. I said it's industry practice, that it is typically a strategic plan because it's a one-to-five-year plan. It's a short-term plan versus a comprehensive plan, which is a 10-to-20, sometimes even longer, to 30-year plan. A strategic plan is typically done before a comprehensive plan because not only does it give the counseling, the guidance, and the experience to your council of what to expect in a comprehensive plan, but it sets the standards of what you're going to, and the standards and the deliverables of what you're going to explore in a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is required by the state of Texas in order to enact zoning. A strategic plan is not. A strategic plan is not required by anybody other than it's recommended for industry practice.
Okay, so, and then secondarily, we're in the middle of recodification. I guess it's not secondary, but anyway.
Yeah, it's part of this.
We're in the middle of the recodification, that's not supposed to be done for another six months or so. The comprehensive plan, or the, back up, the strategic plan is not completed. At least I don't have a completed document. Everything I saw says TBD and that's not complete.
It is completed and adopted by council and the people that were on the strategic plan committee chose for that to be to be determined, to be configured during the comprehensive plan, the vision and mission statement, so that they would be in step with this.
I get what you're saying, but we paid $8,775 to Mr. Ron Cox for a program that said, I will complete a strategic plan, that is not completed. It just says TBD.
On the vision and mission statements, I think what Jennifer's trying to say.
I get it, but.
To be able to marry those two plans together, the vision and the mission statement, you want them to, you want the comprehensive plan, the plan itself is a plan. What you're talking about, what you're, I guess, trying to pick apart are vision and mission statements. Those are statements, they're not actually part of the plan. And when you do these huge plans together, you want to make sure that if you say, we the people decide that we want to do this, this, and this, you want to make sure that it's inclusive of both of those plans. It's just a statement.
I'm aware what it is, but it's, again, the one.
But you're pulling it apart, saying it's not finished, and it's finished except for the mission statement, statements to pull them together, because the other ones are done.
Sorry, did not mean to interrupt you. Jennifer, is, Ardura had any discussion about how those elements get finished within all the?
Yes, those are specific chapters in the comprehensive. And they went over that in the CPAC meeting, those are specific chapters. So you can have a strategic plan, and I think Barb and Stacy were here, and they were involved in that strategic plan process, and we had several workshops. We met on Saturdays, we met for council. The consultant met with every member of that committee individually and interviewed those committee members and talked about community elements, vision elements, staff elements, council and EDC member elements, and what all that looked like. It behooved the group to create a vision statement that could say, the city of Simonton's vision, which a vision is typically a short-term statement for what the city ideals looks like, is to be a park and recreation hub of Fort Bend County. But then we get to the comprehensive plan and the city of Simonton owns no property other than what this city hall sits on, that vision statement is not relevant to the comprehensive plan. So the group decided, let's wait and be responsible and create a vision and mission statement when we have a full comprehensive plan and we are able to work through them. A vision and mission statement do not dictate the completeness or the efficiency and effectiveness of a strategic plan. That strategic plan is 29 pages long because there are 29 pages of work that went into it. A vision and mission statement do not take away from the work that was done in that strategic plan. And that's why it was specifically said to be determined. I mean, you're more than welcome to reach out to Ron Cox, who is in, just a high industry standard in doing strategic plans, and he will explain the exact same thing to you.
As a part of the strategic plan committee, we purposely decided to make those vision elements to be determined after we were going forward with the comprehensive plan. That was a purposeful decision. So your statement about that it's not complete is wrong because it is complete. Just because it says TBD does not mean that we didn't finish the job. We did finish the job. We chose how to finish the job in the best manner suited to what the city's needs were at that time. Council voted on it, went with agreement. So the plan is done.
Are you? I was explaining the whole reasons for my questioning. I was explaining the fact that it appears as though the strategic plan is not done. Because if I say something, if I want a contractual agreement from someone and I pay them a lot of money for it, I want it to be complete when I get it, that's just me. Secondarily, we're in the middle of recodification. They've told us, because we'll see how long that's gonna take, but they've told us thus far it takes up to six, six to eight months to get that done. I know I asked Lori if we had our policies and our ordinances, and obviously the recodification will take care of that, but all of these things in some written form, right? So that we can better serve Ardura with this information. Because basically we're saying, here's this that's unfinished, here's this, you'll get that in about six months. Here's this, and you might or might not get that, but we're expecting them to do the work as well.
So we have ordinances, we have an ordinance book and we have them online available to everybody. Now, some of them are, have become obsolete because legislation changes and things change. But they're available and they're available for Ardura, and recodification is basically weeding that out. It's part of the comprehensive plan process to recodify.
That's my, that's my whole point. You've got little bits of pieces that are not finished, are not available yet to the fullest of their.
It goes hand in hand with the process, though. When we're looking at subdivision ordinances and development, and then you're codifying to go with that.
So it runs.
Then we bring ordinances to council to make those sections mirror the comprehensive plan.
It's like a watch with the others, they're all turning around. They're developing concurrents, none of your asking them doesn't. These particular couple items are on the chapters in the monthly schedule so that they will develop as we go, with the goal that all of it comes together in 11, 12 months and be completed. So some should get through earlier, recodification is one of them, so that council has time to take action on corrections or updates or things that need to happen. And then that'll fit right into the plan with the schedule that they laid out. Does that make sense? Since it was your question.
I have a question. Tell me again, how long is the comprehensive plan supposed to take to complete?
Well, the goal is 11 months, maybe 12.
Because I think I've heard a lot longer.
We, after the scare with the comprehensive plan, council decided to accelerate this from an 18-month or two-year project. They were trying to break it over a couple of budget years and decided to accelerate it because the longer we wait, the more likely we have another problem like that. So the contract and going to bid and all of that with Ardura happened after council decided, let's shorten this up.
I was just wondering, because the strategic plan costs like $8,000. This is $175,000, that's a huge difference. And I just keep wondering, what do we get for that money?
So I can say this, council, and Haley, that I think, as Kevin already mentioned, there's no requirement anywhere for a strategic plan. So the way I would phrase, I mean, any of you in business would understand, you have those for your company, it's just more of a general guiding document to help you make decisions. Comprehensive plan is required if you want zoning. The way that those have taken place, and I think what Ardura responds is probably an industry standard for how you get. When you get 23, people understand 23 pages or so of your strategic plan, your comprehensive plan is going to be, yeah, it could be up to thousands, I mean, if concise, it's probably going to be 300, 400 pages. And what that's going to do is any kind of traffic study, engineering, flooding, land use, all those plans, like street, I mean, all those plans get formed together into one document. And the idea would be that you should use that substantive document to guide your decisions for 20 years. The state law requires those things to be updated about every five years. Unlike, there would be no requirements for strategic planning, whatever happened with that document. For the comp plan document, in addition to the zoning, that's supposed to be the guiding document for your policy basis or any decision. So especially for zoning, it is the document that cements any kind of zoning decision that will come out of the city of Simonton if you were to adopt zoning. But that's the difference, and I've kind of heard that as part of the discussion, talking about between strategic plan and the expectation for that document, it's really just whatever was at place at the time. For the comp plan document, the expectation should be that, that you're talking about substantial document that's going to guide your policy decisions for 20 years. And so that's the expectation to get out of it.
If I'm not mistaken, all of the engineering studies, the flood studies, traffic, looking at growth, looking at all these rates, all of that is a portion, is part of that with their unique departments looking into the growth, the studies, the flooding, everything is part of that.
So can we talk for a second?
So, okay, so wait, so quickly. Council, if you hold your questions for a couple more minutes, we'll let the folks who signed up just eat away in.
So, I mean, so I was asked before the CPAC committee, I work for me, I do it 36 years, I own a business next door and next town. So I actually lived in Fulcher when Fulcher, when the literal growth was coming in on top of Fulcher. And to say this nicely, Fulcher got caught with their pants down. They were not ready for what was coming for them. They probably had a comprehensive plan, but I don't think it was up to date with what was headed their direction. Personally, listening to the whole CPAC meeting, which I attended the whole thing, so did Mr. Turner, what they presented was very detailed, not only for potential for zoning, but also what Jennifer explained at that meeting was, these types of plans are also going to be mandatory for potential funding from government grants. If we're whenever, any money coming, you have to have a plan, otherwise nobody's going to help you out. They're just going to say, well, if you don't have the time to make a plan, and we don't have time to, you know, give you any kind of funding, grant money, or any of this other stuff. And like what the mayor was saying is, I don't think anybody here wants a concrete plant or anything worse, there could be something worse. If that sells off to somebody else, it could be anything. We don't, if we don't have a plan in place in the next 12 months, start doing kind of zoning, and it's not just zoning for about 196 acres. We have an entire ETJ that we can help guide the growth of that ETJ as well. So I think it's real important to make sure that this gets done in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Anybody else who signed up, who was speaking on this item?
Andy Perry again, 219 Pony Lane. Sorry, it's hot up here.
You gotta mention that in a little while, people know.
But I'm invested in the community. I got four acres shop, everybody that lives around me, they'll clean it up. I'm always jealous of your yard, but I also just bought another three and a half acres. It's closer to 1093, I want less people, because the older I get, the less I like people. Concrete plant, we would have looked out, I would have looked at your house, we would have looked at the concrete plant. This is my world, I've done it for 27 years, strategic planning, but also master planning, and I work for a lot of communities, thank God I've been down here 17 years. It's necessary, it will help us community, we can't stop now. I don't want a concrete plant, we can't go backwards, growth is coming, y'all see that, okay? If you go by my airport, they thought we were crazy. There's no land left around my airport, and there's almost no land left around Simonton. So we need to keep going, the value will be there. And that's a great question, what do I get for 175,000? I'll sit down with you and talk to you about master planning. I'll absolutely do that, give you a second opinion. And Courtney, thank you for throwing daggers. Can you tell somebody else to stop the crap, because the community is tired of all of them? Am I right?
Yes.
All sides, all sides. But, but good questions, we do need a plan, we need to keep going with this plan. We will get out of it so we can work, and I don't want to repeat what Susan did, with Tech stock, with Commissioner Morales, and everybody else to get the ordinances. Because I don't want a plan, I don't want some of the other stuff that's come. So hopefully that helped, please just go with it. And Courtney, I understand about the strategic plan, but it's done, it's over, let's move on. Let's go forward, come on, let's go forward. Thank you.
Sarah Jordan, I live at 3673H Cheyenne. I had to write it down because I hate public speaking, so I'm just gonna read whatever, okay? I am here to encourage the council to move forward with the creation and development of a comprehensive plan ASAP. As I watched the last council meeting, I got worried that there were plans to kind of slow down the process and I wasn't understanding why. Just, please don't do that, this is not the battle that, you know, y'all were elected to fight, if there is one. Maybe there is in the future that deserve kind of a back and forth, you know, on both sides of the aisle, so to speak, but this is not the one, you know, this is not the battle to fight. This plan will bring structure to Simonton's future, which is what we need. I sit and I watch development creep in on all sides, and I just want to have a say. I want our city to have a say in how it's developed, and that's this plan, right? So please work together on this, make it happen for us, you know, make it happen quickly. We don't need another concrete plant, we don't need something else coming in, and we just don't have a plan, right? Thank you.
I want to say something, but I'm kind of stuck in a corner. My name is Barbara Mintz, and I live at 3827 Bronco, and I've lived out here since 1989. And I can say, we have skated by many, many times for not being really, really screwed because at one time, Ropers is going to be a biker bar. Another time, a gaming room wanted to come out to our community. There's, we're just so vulnerable right now, we're just hanging out there naked, we need help. So please move forward fast, please.
Y'all don't know me, but. Somebody. But anyhow, when my father bought Pecan Acres, two miles from here, in 1946, and I was seven years old, so I watched a hell of a lot of changes around here. And one thing that we have done, we're not in Simonton, but we have a mud just right up the road. We always, my father started selling property, I did, my brother, my sister, but we always highly restricted what's put on there. And everything, a whole list that Stewart Title Company could come up with, And of everything, a whole list that Stuart Title Company could come up with, we would put in our contracts and...
It's why Simonton's beautiful.
Yeah, it helps. But I recommend also, for people that are not in the city, one, it's great to have a plan. But sellers close by ought to be advised how important it is to restrict the use of the property that you're selling.
Pig farms and the plant. You too.
And the thing is...
You too.
Robert Sue will be that land by the way.
Yeah.
He won't remember me, God darn it. You done lost everything, haven't you?
Well, so we had restrictions for everything.
That's right.
From hog farms to whorehouses.
Yep. Oh, come on.
Anyhow, thank you.
Anybody else here to speak on this topic?
Are we allowed to come back to this? I just kind of want to see what the council has to say before I assume anything with my statement.
So I, quickly, before you go, I do want everyone to know that all the stuff from the CPAT meeting was loaded to the city website. And it's, whether you're like super interested or not, it was actually a super interesting meeting, and they put a lot of good information out on that whole package, so.
So that's kind of what I was referring to, is out there, you can scroll all the way to the bottom of news and info. You'll read for yourself. Would you like to?
I got a question. Don't all the laws pertaining to the city, that how it's run, don't they precede the laws that were set up when the community was developed? Don't they continue? Like restrictions, like restrictions?
So, my ordinances?
Yeah, like your restrictions on what you can build, what you can do, how many acres? Like y'all have an imposition that you can't bring dirt in to build a mound up? Well, that, under state law, you have a displacement.
Right.
You can dig a pond to take that dirt and build your land. You say, can you do that in the, in Valley Lodge?
So the, so the question would be, if it related to the side, would be, and the comp plan, assuming this contract, you know, stays in place, and you deliver the comp plan 11 months from now, if that comprehensive plan has suggestions for zoning ordinance, and then you adopt the zoning ordinance, whatever rules, you know, if there's a, the first of all, if there's conflicting regulations between state law and your comprehensive plan, it's going to be, which one of those is least restrictive will be the one that's going to be applied. The second thing would be...
The state law trump?
Yes.
Yes. And so, if, if state law comes in and says, by right, you know, you can have, I'm going to make it up, instead of you can have, you know, two feet of grass in your front lawn, you adopt zoning regulations, say, no, you can only have one foot of grass in your front lawn, then that's where the issue's going to be. That, when you're mentioning deed restrictions, those will trump the city's ordinances. So if it doesn't remove, just because you adopt zoning, it's not going to remove any private, any privately filed or in place deed restrictions. Those don't, those don't get...
Does those grandfather in though?
Yeah, well, it's, they're still in place no matter what. And so, and so if, so like, if the subdivision, like was just mentioned, like say that subdivision, when it's all built out, say that, say that, you're just going to say that you have to have 35 feet minimum lot width. The city then says, our zoning ordinance is going to say, again, assuming the comp plan's approved and the zoning ordinance says this and you adopt it, say the city's regulations say 80-foot minimum lot width. Those are more restrictive, the cities are more restrictive, but those are going to be grandfathered, and there's not going to be any conflict between the city's ordinances, the public ordinance, and then the private deed restrictions. So those are still, they're not wiping away the private deed restrictions by adopting an ordinance, any zoning ordinance.
Does that answer what you were asking?
That's good.
So basically, our problem is forcing the deed restrictions.
So then that's going to end up being a private side thing that, I forget, it depends on how your, how your e-tractions are set up, but those will have an enforcement mechanism in them, just like the city's ordinances will have an enforcement mechanism, which would be more than likely a code enforcement officer or a planning director, something like that.
Mayor, may I say something for public benefit? And it's, if people want to see the full unedited, because I don't ever edit video, video, then go to simontonaccess.com and see that whole meeting for themselves, if they weren't able to be there. And we can certainly tell people that they can go there for that unedited video, the full meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Back to you.
My, my concern about our Dura, and I don't know if it's in the contract, is that I want to see our city zoned. I don't certainly want to have to deal with another concrete plant or something worse. Yeah, I want to know if we can, you know, hold them to 11 months. I don't want to have it two years down the road, three years down the road.
It's in the contract, and it's actually, the contract gives them a month's grace period, so it's actually 12 months in the contract.
Okay, good.
So that contract is actually in Mr. McJohnken's paperwork that he filed in the Facebook page as well.
And the schedule of what happens each month is also...
It's delivered in chapters, and it's called a progress pay, progress pay plan, meaning because it's delivered in chapters. Like for the month of May, we completed one chapter that met certain benchmarks. Now we're moving on in June, we completed a second chapter. So all of that is included in the paperwork that you can give in what those chapters are, and it's broken out in an 11-month period. And then I will say that while working on getting the website, a tab on the city website that will go to the page that will have like all that current information in that, and that's where like surveys will be, and all those things will be housed there. So that should be like next week, I think it should be.
And just for clarity, in case, and you may not be asking, in this case, anybody's expecting it, at the end of that 11 or 12-month period, the thing you're going to be getting is the comprehensive plan. You're not getting the zoning ordinance. So after that will be, you base your zoning ordinance on that comprehensive plan. Because part of that comprehensive plan, again, it'll take a lot of forms, but basically what you're going to have is the land use portion, you're going to have more than likely like a current land use map or current land use description. And then you're going to have a future land use map that's going to show, based on the comp plan, what the citizens expect the land to look like 20 years from now or 30. And then you base your zoning ordinance on that future land use map. And so then, that's where then you're going to set, you know, residential zones or commercial zones, or whatever it's going to be, based on that future land use map. And that's, after that is when you adopt the zoning ordinance and then the whole procedures. So in 11 months, 12 months, you're getting the comp plan. Subsequent to that is when the zoning ordinances will be placed based on the comp plan.
So, quick question with that. I'm a sheriff lawyer, Jennifer wants to that. So, once that plan's done, or maybe while that plan is going on, I assume that there will be like a planning and zoning committee that will get together and work on it?
We do have a planning committee, so by default, the ordinance is set up, the planning committee is by default city council.
Okay.
So, just to back up a little bit, in the case of the concrete plant, the way our development ordinance is written, there's nothing that specifies that a concrete plant can't come into the city. And that was, that was the big part of the struggle with the concrete plant, was that TCEQ, whether we liked it or not, was going to approve the permit. There was no reason for them not to. But we maintained a relationship with them and pressed how unjudicious it would be for them as a company to come into our city limits based on ABCD, flood restrictions, you know, what that, how difficult that was going to work. So, they would have been required to come to city council to the planning commission, and the planning commission could have approved or denied them. They would have denied them if they wanted to have legally pursued that. And Justin and I had this conversation, there wasn't much that we could stand on legally for why we didn't want them, other than emotional necessity. Want them. So with the execution of the comprehensive plan and adopting zoning, we were then able to create a P and Z, Planning and Zoning Commission, that would now handle the zoning element of that at planning side. So it adds more teeth to what we, because right now, all planning can do is execute based on all development standards that we have in our ordinances. And yeah, they're there, they're thorough, but they don't have much teeth because we don't have anything to supplement that with.
So technically, this has to be adopted prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission being seated. So, to your point, probably there could be some identifying who, how interested parties, what that might look like, but we wouldn't seat that board until after this is adopted.
Legally, doesn't that have to be the EDC?
No, the EDC has a separate line completely.
Is any of the funding for this particular project coming out of the EOC funds?
EOC?
EDC, excuse me.
No. It's been allocated through our operational budget, as of line item under contract.
Is there a method to that madness? Is there a reason that it was not done through the EDC?
Correct.
Because the strat, the strategic, because the EDC is going to do it, and that's...
They did, yeah, correct, at that time. But we earmarked, council opted to earmark under consulting in our operational budget as one month sun. As Lori alluded to, there have been several conversations for over a year about the initial intent of the comprehensive plan was to break it up into two years, so we could do it for over two years. But given the nature of what the city was dealt with the concrete plant, it became evident that the importance in seeing the growth that was coming in to get it done sooner rather than later. So at that time, we earmarked under consulting, we budgeted an estimated $200,000 to pay for that comp plan upfront in one budget year to get it done in the 11 to 12-month period. The price that we got from our Dura payment under budget from what we had roughly budgeted based on industry standard, reaching out to other cities who had done, Fulcher just completed an update to their comprehensive plan, and it was $175,000. That was just for an update. Ours is $172,000 for a whole, brand-new, first-time comprehensive plan.
And in the event that the, what was it, 196 acres, sells between now and a year from now, and they develop whatever they're going to develop on it, what's our recourse?
Let me ask something. If you're talking about commercial businesses versus the residential, can't the city of Simonton request that they be bonded for a certain amount of money in the event there is a, let's say, a spillover of concrete acid to the homes behind them? You know, when the river comes up, all this other stuff comes up too. Well, that wiped out half a Valley Lodge, all that acid that works, that's in the concrete, because concrete is based on acid. That's how, that's how it works. That's how it's formulated. So can't they be, can't you require that they be bonded for an amount of money that would help in the replacement of the homes or the people that get sick because of it? I mean, it depends on the commercial entity that's coming in. Could the city do that? Can you put that into bylaws?
Or you can say...
Or some word? That they, I mean, can you request them to do it?
So, so right now, so right now, the city can, can regulate some aspects of businesses, but we have to be an ordinance that's council would consider and speak into and build into your code ordinances. But when you're talking about the comprehensive plan, and specifically about land uses, type A general law cities like Simonton have very little they can do to direct land use. You can, you can kind of get there if you try to do development standards, which you have here, but a lot of times, it's not about the use on the property, it's about like building structures and that kind of stuff, maybe the layout of the land instead of the use actually on the land. That's where zoning gets used, and you can talk about uses and make sure those are protected. And then for sure, when it gets into zoning, there's things you require for all of it. Depends on what the citizen wants, the council wants inside the zoning ordinance.
So the zoning ordinance would be a way to protect it?
It'd be, it'd be a huge way to protect land use.
Okay.
So any other discussion or other questions you have addressed? And if we can keep excluding you for some...
No, you're fine.
All right, this item is not listed as an item for action. If they're already to move on. Item E, we include the creation of the advisory committee as item E, so that we just have the opportunity to discuss if you have questions or any comment about that.
If not, I'd like to make a motion or something.
On, I probably should have asked you that before we moved on. You're on D or E?
Neither one. It's to, it's about adding an agenda item for next month.
Okay.
Just before we go on to reports.
All right. Now, we're only looking at you like that because we are going to add that for a future where we'll have a topic that'll say future agenda items, and we'll just take the list. There's no discussion allowed on that. Since we don't have it as an agenda item, can we insert that now procedurally, or do we need to?
Well, I think, just for claiming, item E, and then after that, we can, if there's always been no discussion, if you have future agenda items you want to have, we can do that, but just long as we don't discuss them, because we're not actually on the agenda now, I think we should be okay.
Great, thank you, Justin. So item E, any, I think, I assume there was no discussion, but no agreement before we move on? Okay. All right, so Ms. Faith, what would you like to add?
Make a motion that we place an item on our next meeting agenda to allow us to consider and vote, if necessary, to place the financials, including budget versus actual, and including the payment of bills on all future monthly meeting agendas. And I have that written out, I'll hand it to Erica. May I ask for a second?
I don't think we... The mayor has to ask for it. Just one second, I'm still making that motion. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion, just...
On the motion? Okay, my apologies on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Great, thank you. All right, so moving on to item six, reports. I just have a few things to update council about. Great news, more to come soon, but Portman County named Simonton in a project, a broadband project that is going on right now. They're out to bid.
Awesome.
And so, I don't want to get everybody too excited too soon, unfortunately, we know exactly what that's happening, but there are only, I think, three cities, or four, or in Portman County that were specifically named in that broadband project. So we're pretty excited that our commissioner made sure that we were included. So more to come, as we learn about that. I think that their bid process ends next month, so we'll have more to report as we go.
What does that mean?
That means they're working on completing, they call it the last mile, where broadband could, and access would be...
In the neighborhood.
In the neighborhood and throughout the area. They would do studies of what gets placed where, but there'd be some opportunity for broadband that we do not have today, and we have not been able to achieve on our own because there's not connectors between us and transmission right now. So, good news, we're really working on that, trying to find a way around it, and thankfully, our partnership with the county is helping us on that right now. I mentioned, I think, when Andy said about how hot it is back in the hallway, just a note for you to be prepared, we are continuing to have ongoing trouble with our AC units. The one in here is the best operating one, the one for the hall and the other side of the building. They're same thing. We're living them along, we're taking the best care of them we possibly can, but again, they were installed in a way that would be different if you did it today. They're causing lots of condensation, part of the, when you see dripping out of these vents, it's just right on top of the conference table, it happens over there too. And that has to do with the fact that above the ceiling, the ceiling, it's open. There's no, there's insulation up off the roof level, but condensation is a real problem and causing aging on those units. So nothing, no action today, but we'll be surprised if that comes up soon. We'll keep you apprised of the condition of them. We're going to add a, I think I just mentioned this, but we're going to add, going forward, a line item for future agenda items. So we'll do what we just did. If you have a request for an item, you can always do it then. Of course, it's open at any time. You can contact me to add an item if you would like to, or contact Erica or Jennifer. Erica's the one that does the agenda, so she's the most logical person to contact about that, but feel free to let us know if you ever want to request that. That's it for my reports. Jennifer, you have any further report? Ms. Erica?
Just a note that the new codification company we're using did migrate our ordinances, so we do now have a searchable database on our ordinances. You can sign up for emails to notify you when a new ordinance is posted. So that's, you know, the first step in the codification.
So that's, you know, the first step in the codification and stuff.
And that's available to the public to sign up. Anybody can do that. Not just us.
Is that through our city website?
Mm-hmm.
Or from that?
Oh, I do have one next on state identification. The city currently uses a mass communication system, NICSOL. I did want to point out that the part of the, part of the partnership with NICSOL is that NICSOL contracts with the National Weather Service. We do not have access to the National Weather Service and the fact that they are sending you messages saying, there's a tornado coming, there's a heat advisory. There is an, so you understand the context of this. Every time a NICSOL has been going out the last two weeks.
3:00 AM?
Well, the reason they send it out at 3:00 AM is because the National Weather Service updates every three hours, and so 3:00 o'clock is when one of their updates is, and they send it out in the morning before people get up. We take for granted that all of us are fairly in good health. We have amenities in a house with air conditioning. There are people in Simonton that do not have that. But the reason I bring this up is because we've received emails and text messages of people submitting tips back to those NICSOL ones, and I will not tell you what they say because they're inappropriate for me to repeat in a public setting. If you do not want those, opt out of NICSOL. Opt out of getting those, those notifications from the city. It's very simple. If you like them, opt in. But we do not do that. That is the National Weather Service that sends those out. I'm not a meteorologist in America, so.
But just opt in when you see a storm coming.
Right. So I just want to let you guys know that that is going on, so again, some of this behavior is.
Appreciate that. Counsel, anyone to put a report? All right, then we will adjourn at 8:02. Thanks, everybody, for coming and sharing your comments.